... advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date time placed thereof sent to the record, Ridgewood News and the town newspapers, constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts principals offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, "The smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere at school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields." Violators will be subject to fine not to exceed $100. Roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
Barbara?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Al?
Here.
Jesse?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
And Joshua?
Here.
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to evolve our community in an active partnership, evolve our community in active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards.
Thank you, Doug. We'll move into the public comments section on agenda items only. There will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on anything else pertaining to the Riverdale Regional School District. Is Mark here to facilitate, or?
We're live.
Oh, it's in person, okay. Old habits die hard. Any questions?
Comments, comments.
Comments, questions? No, okay, we'll move on. We have a presentation tonight, service recognition and retirements. Is the mic live, gentlemen? Yeah, we're good? Okay. So, first off, I'd like to welcome everybody to our first in-person Board of Education meeting in over fifteen months. And it's a really good meeting to be here because this is a time where we have the opportunity to recognize the great service of the folks that we have who work here at Riverdale. We have a very extensive list. I'm going to introduce everybody who's here and have them come up so that they could have an opportunity to say hello, or how handsome I am, or something like that, but also to recognize that we have some people who are retiring and that they will have, I'd like to give them all an opportunity to say something on their regards. While I have the floor, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Trudy Engel, who's in the back here. Trudy, if you wouldn't mind standing up. Trudy will become our official Business Administrator Board Secretary when Mr. Bonfiglio concludes his service June 30th. And I didn't give her a chance to speak, not because of that, but because I'm going to introduce the next person who never gives up an opportunity to speak. I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian Pepe, in person. Brian is the principal of the high school. He joined us in the middle of January and has done a wonderful job helping bring back students to our district. I think over the last week, we've climbed almost to 50% capacity back, which is a wonderful thing. So congratulations when it comes to that. So let's, without further ado, I have my able assistant here, Liz Elfring. What do we have? With the service people. So what do you got? Yep. So let me have the 15-year people. You want to just hand them over to me? So, and I'm sorry, you have the list of what they did.
No, that's the retirees and what they taught. Oh, no, I didn't put that on.
So we're going to start, Riverdale begins its recognition at 15 years. So the first group of people I'm going to bring up are 15 years. I'm going to name the folks who are not here yet, or are not here at this point, and then bring up those who are. We'll also have an opportunity to recognize our student liaisons who are at the end of the dais over there. So those who are not here include Dana Matsuka, who teaches English at the high school, Brian Reich, who also teaches English. You can see we have a very long-lived English department, and Ron Van Siders, who is a phys ed teacher that's here with us at the high school. So first up is Mr. Todd Bijou. Come on up over here. And what everyone will be receiving, yes, is a certificate with their years of service, and then there's also a Riverdale PIN that indicates their years of service on there as well. Todd, I don't know if you wish to say anything. Todd works with us in our special ed department down in the middle school.
Thank you. Just forgive me for my attire. I just came from T-Ball. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity, for the continued employment. I remember my first year here, at the end of my first year, my daughter was born, and she's actually celebrating her 14th birthday tonight. So thank you, and I look forward to the next however many years. Thank you.
I should also, I failed to mention before, that while we're in person here, this is also the first livestream meeting of Riverdale. We're also being shown live on our RD TV channel, and the meeting will also be recorded and played back at a future date. Now, there's an individual on the 15-year list that I'm going to just skip for now because we're going to honor in a different way in a little bit. Next up would be Andrea Lauderbach. Andrea was also at T-Ball earlier? I'm teasing. I'm teasing. Come on over here. And Andrea teaches physical education and health here at the high school.
One of my fondest memories being here is I was here for weeks, and they told me that there was something in the water, and I was pregnant with my daughter. So there was nothing, like, I was like, oh, my gosh, I finally get to this new, great place. And within a month, I got to be like, so, I'm going to be leaving in a little, but it was great. So thank you so much for all these years. It's been wonderful.
Just, yeah, stand here. Well, there you go. Next up is Mr. Anthony Mandarano. Anthony teaches history and social studies down at the middle school. I don't know if you have anything you want to...
Just congratulations to everyone who's been here, who's retiring. What makes Riverdale so special is the teachers, their commitment to the students, the hard work that they put in. I'm so proud to call myself a member of the Riverdale faculty and all that we do for the students in our community. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Angela Sturzer. Angela is our trainer here at the high school, but she's much more than that to a lot of the students that she comes in contact with. I don't think any of them even know your last name, right? They just call you Ange, because I saw that when you were walking the hallway before. Angela Sturzer.
I just want to say thank you. I feel like I just started yesterday, even though it's been 15 years. It's been such a pleasure and an honor working for Riverdale with the student athletes, the parents, staff members, all the way up to my A.D., which is awesome, Dennis Nelson, as everybody knows, all the way up to the board members and the superintendent, Patrick Fletcher. Thank you so much. I've, it's been an honor, and the bond between the student athletes have been unbelievable. Every year it gets stronger, and I can't wait to see what comes more the next four years. Thank you.
We're very fortunate to have Angela here, and she's going to check out my knee later because it's hurting me. And then finally, in this group, as I mentioned, there's another person I'll be bringing up later. I'd like to bring up Mr. Anthony Traina. Anthony, as you saw, got up from his post over there. He's our media teacher here at the high school, and he's also the person responsible for all of our broadcasting as we go forward here. So, Mr. A-Train, here you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to continue the having kids theme. Literally, in the recovery room with my wife and my son, Michael, who just turned 15, Matt Con keeps calling me, calling me, he's like, are you going to take the job? Are you going to take the job? Are you going to take the job? Like, can I have like a day or two to let you know? And that's my, that's my baby thing. Thank you very much. It's like a second home to me. I'm here enough that Mr. Fletcher got me a bed in my room, so I stay there, and he, there might be some chains involved that he keeps me in there all the time, but thank
Here are our 15 years of service personnel that could be here today. Yeah, of course. Okay. Now we're moving on to 20 years of service, so these people will come back in five years who were just up here to get their next recognition. And for those who have your ears pierced, by then you'll have two pins. You'll be able to wear them as we go. So first up, Sarah Teresa Bartoloni. Sarah Teresa's a teacher of art amongst, among other things that she does here at the middle school and high school, at the high school, and was very instrumental in the video that you saw last week regarding our scholarships and service, and we have our Honor Society coming up shortly as well.
Oh, my gosh. Tomorrow, at 7:00, the Honor Society induction. This is crazy. Yeah, five years went by really fast. Keeping with the baby theme, I can't believe 20 years because my first baby is going to be at the high school next year, much to her chagrin. She'll be maybe running into me, but it'll work out when she needs lunch money. So this has been awesome, and I kind of, I just can't believe how fast the time went. So, thank you so much.
Next up is a dear friend of my family who's been working here for 20 years. I'd like to bring up Mary Sepaglia.
She's 20 years. Come on, crazy. I'm only 32 years old.
Mary is only 32 years old. I was going to say that.
So I'll be here another 50.
Right. And Mary teaches biology and earth science and a number of other science classes here because she has a certificate that's the gold standard, teacher of science. We love that, so, Mary Sepaglia.
Me too, because I love teaching science, and I love the kids. And 20 years here, I live here, which I always tell my parents, my, you know, the parents, and I say, you know what? It takes a village, right? So it's great to live here and to work here. And talking about the kids, like, my little one was in fifth grade when I came here, and now she's like getting married, like, what? So much time has passed, and it's been such a beautiful place to work, and I sincerely can't imagine what I'll feel like in another 20 years.
Next up, Carrie Vollmar. Carrie is a teacher of mathematics here at the high school and also a part of our co-curricular program. Carrie, 20 years?
20 years. Hard to believe. So I've been at Riverdale for quite some time. I graduated from here a couple of years ago, and I just want to thank everyone, my three children, my, they're here tonight, too. They've gone through the Riverdale program. It's an awesome place to be. It was awesome in the 80s. Oh, I gave it away. It was awesome in the 80s. I did leave teaching for a little bit, worked in business, and then decided to come back to teaching. We bought a house in town, and it's a great place to work. When I first started, I'm like, there's no way, my son's only three, I'm not going to be here in 20 years. No way. Or when he's in high school, and here I am. Couldn't imagine being anywhere else. So thank you, everyone. So it's a great place, so thank you.
Thank you. And next up is John Ziccone. John is a teacher of social studies at the middle school.
I was just thinking, when people were speaking, and it was 20 years ago, probably around July 1st coming up, or July 2nd, Dr. Ralph called me. I was down in Wildwood with my wife and my 11-year-old daughter at the time, and he said, you got the job if you still want it. And I was like, yes, yes, I want it, you know? So with tears in my eyes, I was very happy. I graduated Riverdale, grew up in River Edge, and I love working here. I love the students, and I love the faculty. It's really a wonderful place to work, and it's a blessing. So, thank you.
So in addition to these fine folks, Anthony Castora, who's an aide here at the high school, Mike Dunphy, who is our tech guru, Danielle Russo, who is a teacher of English here at the high school, and Michelle DiVincenzo, who is social studies at the high school and also involved in our athletic program, are also 20 year, sorry, science. It's just like I'm at home. I can't say a word without, you know. It's okay. Michelle will get me tomorrow. Don't worry about it. Who also are our 20-year recipients. So we have one 25-year recipient who's unable to be here tonight. That's Kathy Krieger, who is retiring as a school nurse here at the high school. Kathy was instrumental in helping us survive this last year that we've been through. I will surely miss her, and my mother told me to say that because my mother's a retired school nurse, and I would be in deep trouble if I didn't mention the whole school nurse thing. But Kathy couldn't be here tonight, and we're sorry for that. So now I want to move off into pick up some other things that we have here because we have a number of people who are moving on. Just give me the first one. Let's do Mike O'Reilly. Yeah?
Because we don't want to give you that loophole. We do have a 15-year certificate for you, my friend. Even though this last year probably felt like 15, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm very pleased I will treasure this because 15 years ago, I had dark hair. So who's up first? Yeah. Yeah, we'll do Tom last. So this year is bringing to close the careers of a number of people from Riverdale, and we're sorry to see each and every one of them leave us at some point or another. However, I'm very happy to, because I've had a chance to speak to all of them, to know that they're moving on for all good reasons, which is wonderful. They have an opportunity moving forward to continue to enjoy life without coming in every day, although from seeing the people that you just saw, some people never left Riverdale. They grew up here, and they're here forever, and I think that's a wonderful testament to our district and to the stability of our programs. So first up on the retirement list is Mr. Michael O'Reilly. Michael is retiring after 19 years of service here. He is a teacher of music at the middle school and also our band leader, if you will. And for Michael, we have our retirement is your certificate, et cetera, and then, of course, a lovely token of our affection, even though it's a relatively small one, unlike, you know, Hewlett Packard, we can't give you a million dollars, but we can give you a sign of that. So, Michael, if you would like to?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the administration for giving me this opportunity for this many years to have an impact on the culture of Riverdale. Not often do you get the opportunity, coming from another school district, where they want you. They, Riverdale came and recruited me to be here, so that was a very special thing in my career. I would be remiss if I didn't attribute some of my success to the dedication and enthusiasm with the students that I work with and their parents as well. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
I also failed to mention that all the retirees also get a card so that you can get in free for all of our future athletic activities. It will not get you out of jail, though, Michael. It will not. So there's an individual that I want to recognize now who I skipped over before because the person is actually getting, if you will, two areas of recognition. I'd like to bring up Ms. Carrie Jacobus. Carrie is our chemistry teacher extraordinaire here at the high school. She also is concluding her 15th year of service, so I skipped over that before. We have two certificates here, and is also moving on to retirement. We will miss you dearly, Carrie.
Thank you. Hi. I used to be known as Carrie Bell, and I went to Riverdale, swore I'd never come back, and look what's happened. I have been associated with this school system for over 30 years because we bought, our first house was in River Edge, our second house we built in Oradell, and all three of my children went through this school system, and they're all really successful, so I thank all the teachers that were here at the time. And I love the students here. There's always a few, you know, that aren't too happy to have me, but that's okay. I just really, this is my third school system when I came back to teaching, and I love the teachers, they're so supportive, the kids. I got one down there, right, Josh? Yeah. And it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with everybody, and I've learned so much. And I came here because Mrs. Sears, the former AP Chem teacher, said Carrie's going to be my replacement, and that was a wonderful two years that I spent working with her. I still have contact with her. Every month we chat, and she's doing well. And I just want to thank you all because this has been a real wonderful experience, and I have a pile of letters from former students, and I was just on with one that graduated 11 years ago, who's a doctor. She's in her residency now, and she called me for advice. So that's kind of nice that you had your chemistry teacher 12 years ago, and you're calling her for advice. So it's been really nice, and I've made wonderful, wonderful contacts with people, and I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next up is Dottie Welch. Dottie, as she's affectionately known, is our job coach here at the high school. That means she gets to work with our students as they do community-based programming outside. And Dottie's a pioneer, as she is our first job coach and is retiring after 14 years of service. Congratulations, Dottie.
Thank you, thank you. At first, I cannot say thank you enough. I thank God for giving me favor in the sight of not only Patrick Fletcher, but the board in accepting me as the job coach/employment specialist/job developer. It's been a joy bringing the knowledge and understanding to students. It's been a joy working with them. This is my second school district, and 25 years ago, I never knew that I would have the opportunity to work with students with disabilities, but working with adults, I saw the problems that arise in their lives. So I said, you know, maybe I would be more useful working with them when they're younger so that they will not have the issues that they would have once they become adults. Well, life skills has been wonderful, not only for the students, but for me. It was a great experience from, for me, and I'm just, I can't talk too much because it's bittersweet. I'm going to miss you all. I'm emotional, can't help it. I'm going to miss each and every one of you, and I just, I'm just grateful for the opportunity. I'm grateful my children are here with me on the day. My husband couldn't come because he has a blood clot in his leg, and he can't travel. He has to stay off of it. But you just keep me in prayer. We have some, some good things going. We're going to start a CDC program in Lakewood, New Jersey, and I have many plans to move forward and still work in the area of helping people with disabilities and working with the welfare-to-work program along with the homeless. I thank you all for the opportunity to work with Riverdale.
You got to, you have to stay up here, Dottie. We have to embarrass you a little bit more. The next person I'd like to bring up is Frederick Smith. Fred is our head grounds person here at the high school, and if any of you have had the opportunity to take a look at our fields, you know that Riverdale is the envy of the other districts in Bergen County as far as this is concerned. Fred is retiring after 13 years of service. I'm sure he will miss the days when I come by and say, Fred, you know, you did that crosscut on the field, and it's not straight. I think you need to move it a little bit, but congratulations, Fred.
Thank you.
This one's mine. How much time do I have?
Quite a bit.
All right. You know I like to talk, so. First person I want to thank, and she's not here, and that's my wife of 35 years, but she's at our new home in Alabama waiting for me and dealing with the contractors that I keep hiring and sending her away, and then she has to listen to me yell at her, so I really do want to thank her. There's a lot of people here I need to thank because this place has been nothing but a family to me for the 13 years. I do have 25 years of service in the school system. I'm with this other school. We won't mention it, okay? Part-time for 25 years, so that's where my time comes from. I'd like to thank Mr. Fletcher, Patrick Fletcher, because as busy as he is, he has never said no when I've asked for a minute. So I really appreciate that. The student body here, the teachers, the coaches, Dennis Nelson, they've been awesome. Just awesome. They really work with us, and that's why the place looks like it looks. We did away with half the garbage pails out there. To you, that may not be a big deal. To Bruce and I, that's a big deal. Person I really want to thank is Tom Bonfiglio. Person I really want to thank is Tom Bonfiglio for hiring me, taking a chance on me while I was still working at another company when they were closing down. He took a chance on hiring me. He has supported me the whole way. Tremendous, tremendous boss, and you can't say, "I'm kissing butt," because I am retiring, so I really, really mean it. The board has been awesome. You rehire me every year. I've worked with some of you on the field, you've been on the Booster Club. Everybody takes the time to stop and say hello around here, and that's, that's awesome. It really is. And I am going to truly miss this, but I can't wait to get in my truck and leave here. I already got Alabama plates on my truck, so thank you very much. Now, as I mentioned before, we have Kathy Krieger, retiring as our school nurse. Mary Joan Wilcoxen, retired in November. Mary Joan was a teacher of world language, specifically, or most recently, Spanish here at the high school, for 23 years. DJ Nymphaeus retired December 31st. Donald is a teacher of social studies here at the high school. He served 16 and a half years here at Riverdale. He's also been our football coach for quite a number of years, and we hope to see him back when he serves his first six months of sentencing post-retirement, when we resume next year. Margaret Cronin, many of you know her as Mickey, is retiring. She's the administrative assistant to the high school principal. Mickey's been here for 29 years, and we will miss her as she moves on to the next phase of her life. Jody Murphy worked with us for just a short period of time in the, in the business office. She was the executive secretary to Tom Bonfiglio. Rocco Pantofio is retiring at the end of the year. Rocco is a custodian here at the high school, and he's been here for 18 years. And then Ronnie Shoemaker, retired. He was the head custodian here at the high school, and he retired after 15 and a half years of service. So, normally, when we do these things, we honor the people whose cutoff date, if you will, is June 30th. I'm just going to throw in one more. Mr. Richard Friedman is retiring from the middle school principalship. He's leaving us August 31st, after 18 years of service. And finally, good segue from Fred, I'd like to bring up Tom Bonfiglio. So, Tom gets two. He gets 25 years of service and retirement honors. As, as was mentioned, Tom is the business official for the school district. He's been here for 25 years. When I came here, I had dark hair. Tom had dark hair. Look at this, look at that. I think I got the wrong job on it. But, all kidding aside, Tom is the other reason that the facilities look the way that they do. Tom spends the district's money as if it was his own, and we have the, one of the best facilities, both inside and out, in, across the state, and it's largely due to his efforts. So, Tom?
First of all, thank you.
You got it, buddy.
Well, I am probably one of the only people that did not go to Riverdale, okay? Which is kind of unique, all right? When I first got to Riverdale back in 96, this is a true story, the referendum was going on when they were replacing windows, roofs, and doors. I was, I was having the interview for my position, and all of a sudden, the fire alarm goes off. One of the guys putting in the windows snipped a line. True story. We go out, and Ruth Toplet says, you know, "There's something about this whole situation." 25 years later, we're still here. Okay? It is the best place I've ever worked. It is the best job I've ever had. It is, there are days, of course, but for the most part, there's never really a time where I say, "I don't want to come in." Everybody has alluded to this point in which there is something unique about Riverdale. It's not tangible, can't put your finger on it, but when we do the new teacher orientation in August, I say to them, "You will be here," and they look at me. And from those people, right, Carrie? And Sarah Theresa, and all the other folks, there is something really neat about Riverdale. It's a people place. It's just not a place of education. I was extremely fortunate to be in the position I was, because when the administrators needed something for the kids, we always got it. When the principals needed something, we got it. When Fred needed something, and he needed something, and he needed something, we got it, okay? But that's what makes this place up, okay? It is one heck of a place. I have been proud to be here for 25 years. My children were five and six, hard to believe. They played with matchbox cars in my office, and now they don't. I just want to thank you all. It's really, really been a great run, and thank you for all helping me out. Thank you very much.
Many years of service and retirees, congratulations. That's why I love this meeting of the year. It's the best meeting of the year. I'd also like to, just to take a moment, to recognize three individuals, two who are here this evening, who have been a good voice for the district over the course of the last 15 months. And I say 15 months, because a couple of them helped participate in our reopening plan at the beginning of the year and over the summertime. They have attended our meetings and, on occasion, provided us with some really good insight from a student point of view. Nicole Sarafian, Noel Sarafian, excuse me, forgive me for that. Josh Weisenthal and Jesse Henderson. So, congratulations. I will also be presenting the three of you later with your own certificates and a PIN that won't say years of service on it, but it will be our Riverdale PIN, just blank, because of everything that you've done for us, and we congratulate you. They may not be joining us at our last public meeting in June, because it's the week of their graduation, but we at least wanted to take a moment to acknowledge their help and service to us. So, we're going to just pause the meeting for a few minutes, allow anybody to stretch, leave if you want to. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, if you'd like, but we'll pause for a few minutes and then reconvene shortly. Thank you very much.
We're going to get into the student member report and we have two of the students with us in person. So Noel, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I wanted to thank Ms. Russell and Mr. Trainor for putting together like the award and scholarship videos. Those are really nice to watch at home with their parents and everything. And I know Ms. Russell put a lot of effort into editing everything. I couldn't imagine going through all that video twice. So I want to thank her for that. And I think all the seniors are getting really excited for prom this Thursday. And we're putting the finishing touches on everything. But I want to thank Mr. Pepe, Mr. Stock and everyone else to help coordinate everything and make it what it's gonna be.
I should agree with Noel's statement. I want to thank everyone too. The scholarship and awards ceremony was great. I think everyone really enjoyed it, especially people who normally wouldn't be able to come were able to see it. And that was really nice. I think, yeah, everyone's really excited about prom and the seniors. And I think there's a bunch of fun events for like the underclassmen too. I know the sophomore fun day this week, I think. And the SGO is still planning stuff to do something at the end of the year, something nice. And I think everyone is looking forward to the end of the year with like a bittersweet remembrance of the year, especially with how crazy the year has been. But I, and student enrollment seems to be in my classes like increasing, which is really nice. And seeing my peers for like one of the last times.
Thank you. Thank you for your year on the board here. We appreciate it. My report is just gonna feed off of Noel and Joshua. I know Brian and his staff have put together a list of year-ending events to try to make this year feel as normal as possible, even though it was a very rough year for the senior class, being virtual, hybrid and everything else in between. I did get a chance to watch on YouTube both the senior awards and the senior scholarship. It was very well done. And thank you Anthony as well for putting together a very nice event. And of course with the tomorrow, I believe it is, the Honor Society, which is also a pre-recorded presentation. And then, you know, the prom on Thursday night. Hopefully the weather is gonna be wonderful for them to have a night that they will make a lot of fond memories. That's all I have for tonight, so Patrick, I'll pass it on to you.
I also have a relatively brief report. But to piggyback on the previous issue, one of the compliments that I received over the award ceremony being virtual the way it was is that some of the presenters contacted us directly and said that for the first time, they were able to actually see the entire event because they weren't moving from one place to another. So there's been a kind of a bittersweet approach to this. It was a wonderful event. It's been great live because I've been to it live 12 different times before, or 13 different times before. But it may be something that we need to keep considering is how we can make this come out to a wider audience. It was a great night. A lot of students walked away with some pretty impressive scholarships. And I believe we also have one student attending the Naval Academy, I think it is. So that's quite an accomplishment there as well. As been mentioned, we're coming to the end of a very unusual school year. And we're also beginning to plan for the future school year. That's coming in September. So last week, both Mr. Pepe and Mr. Friedman, you know, had faculty meetings, talked about the schedules coming up. We distributed schedules to staff members on Friday. And we'll be getting the schedules out for the students towards the, over the next two weeks. But one of the interesting things that's gonna be done here at the high school is that we're going to actually have a second lunch period. We're going to modify the schedule so that there are two lunch periods because between that space that we're in now and the commons where we set up, you know, we're gonna obviously play it like the airlines do and overbook and hope some people don't come. But we're going to be able to seat everybody in just these two locations as opposed to all over the building as it has been before. So those specific kinds of details will start to come out over the course of the next couple of weeks. As I mentioned to you before, you know, one of the things is that Tom has always tried to help make sure the district moves forward. And even when he leaves us, one of the legacy projects is that we're finishing installing what are called ionizers or air purifiers throughout the entire ventilation system here in the district, which will allow us, I think, to be in a much better situation when the district opens next year for full-time in-person enrollment. That is what we're planning for. We anticipate that that's what will be in place. We do always maintain the caveat that if the governor's office changes everything or the legislature changes things, we may have to modify. But we're planning for full-time in-person instruction to begin next, next September. Riverdale is also in a very unique situation in that except for a very, very few students, all of our students, seven through 12, our ages are above the vaccination line right now, which is 12 years old. Riverdale could be in a position where 100% of our students are vaccinated. Now, do I anticipate that? No, but I do think based upon what at least the senior class or individual members of the senior class have told me, yeah, we're going out and getting vaccinated, Mr. Fletcher. And there's a lot of students that are. So when we open our community pass, which is the place where students and their parents, you know, register students at the beginning of the year and acknowledge the acceptable use policy and pay for their laptops, et cetera, et cetera, we'll also be collecting vaccination information from the students in order to put into our database. Our database is completely confidential because we, and we've been, if you will, capturing this type of information on individual students for 100 years, not just recently, but for 100 years. We've, of course, it's become more electronic over the last 15 years or so. But we will be collecting that information because as it stands right now, the state is not mandating vaccines. I will not be recommending to the board that we mandate them. I encourage them tremendously. I can tell you personally that when I got my vaccination, I felt like I was given a gift. But we are gonna encourage it. We're gonna encourage people to become vaccinated because I believe that regardless of what happens, as the vaccine penetrates our student population, we will have a much different year than some of our colleagues in other school districts because of the populations they serve. So we will start to be letting people know about that coming up. I will be issuing a global letter to the community tomorrow, talking about what I just did. Very brief, high-level kinds of conversation, which will be followed up by specific information that will be coming from the high school and the middle school regarding those topics as we move forward. So we are looking forward to, to bringing this year to close. I was on the line earlier today with Mr. Friedman and Mr. Pepe. And we were celebrating that we're close to 50% capacity. But at the same time, that means 50% of the kids aren't in school. And we're hopeful that that number will continue to increase, meaning those in person, and decrease those who are not over the next couple of weeks. And also, the final week of school is a four-day, it's a half-day program, okay? It's a little different than what we've been doing for the last couple of months because we'll be in session from 8:00 a.m. to 12:05 or 12:10. Because coupled with that is the collection of the laptops. It's very, except for the senior class who was giving up their laptops a couple of days earlier. But all the other grades, seven, eight, nine, 10 and 11, will be collecting laptops during that last week of school. It's critical for us this year because we're renewing the lease, which means that all of the devices that we're collecting, we're going to be shipping back to the manufacturer for a big credit. Versus, and we'll be receiving, we already have received, we have them on site. They're being imaged as we speak. But new laptops for every student and staff member for the next school year. So that last week's gonna be a little convoluted. But it also will have the moving up ceremony of the middle school. I think that's on Monday, the 21st. And we culminate with this little thing called graduation. We are continuing to monitor the guidance that comes from the state. We all, I've said this 100 times over the last year. There are often statements made, in particular on Monday, at the governor's press conferences, which take time to filter to us. We do anticipate that those extra activities that take place will be much more normal than they have been. But as it stands right now, I anticipate that masks will be worn in school through the rest of the school year and that we will see lessening of those things as we have those extracurricular and outside activities. But you never know, tomorrow that may change. So with that in mind, it's been, it'll, it's a much better end of the year than it was the beginning. And that means to me that the beginning of next year will be much better than it was before. So that concludes my report. Yeah.
Is the courtyard, is it watered? Is like an overflow of space for the lunches?
Courtyard outside, yeah.
Yeah, weather permitting?
Yep.
Okay. And, and it wasn't overlooked. It's just, we, we don't think of it in as much course. But the middle school, Mr. Friedman sent out this wonderful list of all of the middle school activities that are going on towards the end of the year.
Yep.
And so I'm sure that's on the website somewhere for anybody to access. But it did go home to all the parents and student body. And they've got a lot of really special things
Yeah.
that are, that are typical for the end of the school year and that, that don't have as much modification probably because they're, they're just not as grandiose as the high school ones might have been, so.
Right. And I don't speak for Mr. Pepe because he is here. But he sent out a very detailed outline of those activities probably three weeks ago. And then subsequently has been sending out specific ones. So for instance, the one that went out yesterday, last evening, talked about this week, et cetera. So it's a little different approach. But yeah, I think the last, the end of the school year is gonna be pretty, pretty good, pretty fun. I hope there's a lot of people around. I gotta tell you, I laughed about it, but I had to come up here at a meeting for 11:45 and I actually got stuck in traffic. And instead of being upset about it, I was cheering the fact that I was stuck in traffic because it was school traffic. It was great. That's it.
Okay. I know it's been kind of quiet for the committee meetings, although we have a few on, on the calendar. So I'll just run through, Joe, budget and finance.
We have not met, but we will be meeting virtually on Thursday with our BA, you know, old BA, our retired BA.
Old.
With our old or retired one.
Our son setting in. Our son.
No, I was right with you, old. Just because he's got dark hair doesn't mean he's old, not old.
Facilities and security, Doug.
We have not met, but we're gonna plan something.
Community relations and technology, John.
No meetings since last time.
Okay, curriculum, which is Claudia.
No meeting.
And last but not least, policy and governance, and that is Stephanie.
Did you wanna talk about what happened in the faculty and abroad, sir?
Oh, you can.
So just to let people know, I believe it was two meetings ago, there was a presentation made to the board by Lindsay Steffer, Stefner, Stefner, sorry. And speaking about a former educator and coach, Brenda Canal. And, and while she was the one speaking, it was on behalf of a large group of people that are interested in doing something in recognition for her on a more permanent basis somewhere in the facility. And we did promise that we would discuss it. We do have a policy that, that is narrow but not closed. So we did discuss it in executive this evening. And while we're on a trail, we're not at a point yet in which we can announce anything one way or the other. So hopefully that will be next meeting, if not the meeting after. And of course, once there is a formal decision, Mr. Fletcher will, of course, reach out to those who started this initiative and, and send them something personally beyond whatever we make a public statement about.
Okay, thank you. Let's move into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Claudia, thank you. Was it Alan? Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al.
Yes. Okay, first vote tonight is under B, resignations and retirements, number one. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of teacher of science Carrie Jacobus effective June 30th, 2021. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Doug, thank you. Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes, and I wish her well.
Alan?
Yes, and good luck.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes, I will miss her.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe? Yes, and you will be missed. Stephanie?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in my household, you know, Carrie made a huge difference for my child, who is a chemist and is pursuing an advanced degree in chemistry. And really went above and beyond, as so many teachers do for different students that have aptitude or interest in certain subject matters. And so she has many gifts and I'm glad she's getting the opportunity to explore them. But we will definitely miss her.
Thank you.
And Al?
Yes, and good luck. That brings us, I don't believe there are any other votes. No, actually we'll bring over, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, can I make a motion to move forward? Executive items eight, nine and 10, and the addendum items 11, 12, 13 and 14.
I'll second.
Okay, and let me, I'll briefly go over some of these items that we're bringing forward. Eight is listed under appointments. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Bruce Laborceria. I probably butchered that, sorry. Laborceria as a building service unit heads grounds person effective July 1st, 2021. Number nine is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Blake Smith. That's an easy one, as building service employee grounds person effective June 16th, 2021. Number 10, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Deborah Emery as a job coach effective July 1st, 2021. Under appointments again, number 11 is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Samantha Strauss as teacher of chemistry effective September 1, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. Number 12, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Alexander Gomez to the position of building service employee maintenance for the school year 2021 through 2022. Number 13 is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Lilia Medina to the position of building service employee custodian. Number 14, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Jacqueline Coito to the position of building service employee custodian for the 2021-22 school year effective July 1st, 2021. Any questions or issues there?
I just had a question and I'm sorry I didn't ask it before, Pat. Under the appointment under 11, where it says it's emergent. Have I, have I just not been paying attention all these years? And we always use that wording, or?
11, here.
This is an emergent appointment.
Right here.
Usually it does say background children, I don't know if you use that language. Actually, I think that is unnecessary language, quite frankly.
Right, the sentence before is typical, but, right?
An emergent application is when a person is in process to get their certificate and it's a crucial position. So this just got probably carried forward, but it is.
It's not emergent, right?
Not emergent, fully certified, no issues.
Okay, so.
That language could be struck.
Okay, so can we just amend that?
We'll just take that off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, eagle eye.
I know, it seemed clear, right?
Anyone else have any questions there? Tom, when you're ready, please.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al.
Yes. And that now brings us to old business slash new business. If anybody has anything.
Al, I think that just, again, since we're there, gratitude and thank yous and all too. I just actually wanna say, I was gonna say Nicole, no, Noel. And Joshua, thank you very much because it has been a trying year. But I was really glad to see that almost every meeting you guys were, were here and all too. So it is appreciated very, very much because it has been a trying year. So I just wanted again, a shout out to you guys because it's been great and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck in the last month.
Thank you.
And my, and my money's on these guys actually showing up even though there is graduation all too, but no pressure. I just, I just know you guys, I just have a good, good feeling.
Oh, can I?
Sure.
Sorry. Claudia and I this morning attended a visitation at our school. And.
There's been a lot that the high school has tried to lean into this year in doing presentations for the students, even in virtual platforms. And this morning had its fair share of glitches. But the students were incredibly patient, much more than I think we were. But they were incredibly patient and gracious and asked amazing questions. And I hope, you know, walked away with not only cautionary information, but information about, you know, bouncing back and resiliency. And we all stumble and it's, you know, nothing is a foregone conclusion. And so we really have appreciated all the people that have sort of leaned in this year to bring to the student body as many opportunities as they could to hear interesting stories or have more experiential contact outside of their classroom.
If I could do one more thank you?
Sure.
Again, I just, you know, Mr. Train, I guess with the awards, like and all too, but it was really good. And as you said, Mr. Fletcher, being in a lot of those live, it actually was kinda nice again to see everything for the second year in a row. But my thanking really goes out to the people in the community and all too because there was additional scholarships this year that weren't there before and all too. And it's just a big shout out to the community, you know. And a lot of that has to do, I was talking to Mr. Train about it all too, that a lot of our students are now giving back. Students who, let's say, weren't even the greatest students here, but are giving back because of what their faculty has done to kind of instill that into them and all too. So again, thank you to the community and the faculty for what they're doing to instill that kind of generosity for existing students. I just wanna make sure since it is going out live to people and all to, to say thank you.
Very good. Anybody else have anything?
Are we seriously one meeting away, Tom?
I haven't been counting, but yes.
Oh, my God. I love that Trudy's here and with us, but wow, one meeting came quickly.
Yeah.
25 years just flew by.
So I need to know what's on the agenda for the summer. What bathroom are we doing?
We're not doing any bathrooms this year.
No?
None, you've got none. I've got them all, I've scouted them out.
All right. Trudy, you're a lucky woman. We've been doing bathrooms for years.
Okay, let's jump into public comments. You would be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments? Okay, that could be anyone.
I love how they all look over at Mr. Train, I'm like, no.
Trudy and Brian, I guess, don't have anything for us? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion, Claudia.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bang. We have, what, 9:15?